Good evening, everyone. It's 6:01. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with an invocation led by Councilmember Parker, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember McKenzie. Please rise as you're able.
Spirit of life, spirit of love, spirit of community, spirit of justice. Be with us tonight as we gather to conduct the people's business. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. Be with our community members tonight who have no homes, those who are ill in mind, body, or spirit, the immigrants and refugees and the organizations who serve them, those facing work layoffs and evictions, those who depend on Medicaid and Social Security, those who live on the margins, those who are alone. Give them strength and bring them comfort and give us the understanding of how best to serve them. This we humbly ask of thee, so may it be.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Johnson, if you please, call roll.
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Here.
Bus Mayor Smith?
Here.
And Councilman Thomas?
All members present, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes from February 18th? Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Fugit? Did you have your light? Okay, that's okay. Yeah, there's a lot of new things going on. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn from tonight's agenda? Any items to be postponed? Any items to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent items?
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, time now for my mayor's report. First, I want to thank councilmembers for your patience as PBA took some time to redo the layout here and new furnishings. We've been in the small assembly room for the last, I don't know, two months. So it's good to be back in this room. I know there's a little bit of getting used to things. It's really tight up here. I barely have any room. Anyhow, Councilmember Ryder, can you see everybody?
You guys look really good down there.
Okay.
Mr. DeBose is making eye contact with me that I can see.
Okay.
So I know you're here.
Anyhow, thank you, PBA. I don't know if... Oh, that's not PBA's fault. Yeah. Siri is happy too, maybe. Anyhow, just wanted to thank everybody for their patience as we worked through it. We have some new things. This thing, our Seal of the City of Knoxville, used to be in front. Now it's behind us, so it's always there. We don't have to move it around. And there's a really, really big screen up there, which hopefully is better visibility for those... Audience members nod if you like it. Is it looking good? Okay, maybe hopefully it's easier for people to follow along on the agenda if they don't have a paper copy or a device. Oh, there you are, Jane Burrit. Thank you for all your work. Okay, but there are, yeah, so there are a few things. I also really like the nameplates. I think those are a nice feature and it's nice to have cabinet members identified as well, their roles. So moving right along, I just want to mention a couple of things happening later this week. First, our annual neighborhood award dinner is this Thursday at the Brookside on Central Street. That's the same place we've had it the last couple of years. And I want to thank all of the neighbors who have taken time to nominate someone who's making a difference in their corner of the city. This event is always a great reminder of how small acts in your own neighborhood can have a profound impact on life here in Knoxville. We will be sharing the award recipients later this week and I'm sure councilmembers, hopefully, will be able to join us at this really fun event. Later, oh, also, the same night, I'll be attending both, one after the other, and maybe you can do the same, is a KPD graduation. The latest recruit class is graduating and that will be at 6:00 PM at the Civic Coliseum, Civic Auditorium. Everyone is invited to celebrate these 12 men and women for all their hard work and to thank them for their commitment to serving the people of Knoxville. So Thursday is the Neighborhood Awards Dinner and KPD graduation. And a quick reminder about our rules of decorum. We are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum need to sign up with the city recorder, Mr. Johnson, before 4:00 PM. Do not use profanity. And when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note, if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave and escorted out. I appreciate in advance everyone's respect for these rules and that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports of councilmembers or committees? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, mayor. I want to mention some things on Highland Drive. That's been a topic of discussion in my district because of some traffic problems there and I have a good report. We had turned in some information to Zero...
Vision Zero?
Vision Zero.
Cody Gentry.
And Cody Gentry and the Department of Engineering did some work on there and I've got a report from Mr. Gentry and I would like to read from some of the statistics here. And he's talking about Highland Drive near Jenkins Grove was identified as a Tier One segment of high injury network. And they had completed some improvements there. One was a radar feedback speed sign in January of 2023 and then an always stop sign at Highland on April 2023. And they did a study and the 18 months before these improvements, there were 12 total crashes and one fatality and two injury crashes. In the 18 months since these improvements, there have been two total crashes and no injuries or fatal crashes. So because of the actions taken by Vision Zero and the Department of Engineering, the statistics went from 12 accidents and a fatality to two crashes and no fatalities. So when we're talking about Vision Zero, there were zero after some action was taken. So just a shout out and also want people to know on Highland Drive, even though those improvements have been made, we'll be still looking at other ways to make those. So that ends my council report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and discuss or just express my concerns about the new deputy chief that will be coming in. And I wanted to bring it up out loud because so often we don't talk about these things out loud. I have concerns about some of the sexual harassment or misbehavior that he may, that he is accused of and I'm not saying he's guilty by any means, but I am saying it's something I want us to be aware of because we've had that type of misbehavior here and I don't want to see that again. It's something that goes on so often and... So chief, I'm just asking you to, if there's something going on, please bring it to the light as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Singh. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, mayor. Just want to give a brief update that Greyhound bus representatives did reach out to me and working in conjunction with the Burlington Business Association. There was a meeting at the Connect Ministries in Burlington. So I just want to thank Cynthia Finch and Kira Wyatt for hosting that meeting and David Brace was able to attend. We did not get a lot of notice to coordinate this meeting, but it was good that they reached out, that they are listening. They did want to hear from the community about the concerns and did give a commit, did commit to having a resolution and getting back with us hopefully by the end of the year. So I just wanted to let everyone know that they did reach out and they were very grateful for the feedback. Of course, I think that they had already looked at some of the media releases and comments that had already been given from the community and the city at large. This is not isolated to Knoxville. However, it does affect us in our community here and so I just wanted to say we did appreciate them putting forth that effort and we'll see where it goes from here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other lights, we'll move on to 11...
11A.
11A.
11A has a resolution rescheduling the Beer Board and City Council meetings of April 15, 2025, to April 29, 2025.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, mayor. I had a question for planning. I know the charter requires us to deal with the one-year plan and I think you have to send it to us before the first meeting in April and we have to vote on it in April. I just wanted to make sure there was no issues with the timing and not having this meeting on the 15th in April with regard to passage of the one-year plan or if there were any other issues that you saw.
Ms. Portier?
Yes, Portier, thank you. Yes, Knoxville, Knoxville County Planning. I can look at the dates that are specific to see... I know we are bringing the one-year plan to Planning Commission this month and so you all would get it the following. I don't believe that there's any issues with that, but I'll double check the dates on that real quick.
Okay, because we're voting on it now and if there's an issue, then we'd have to, we would have already changed the meeting. I don't think there is necessarily, but I think it's worth exploring. I know that, you know, that had been reached out to planning staff. We didn't get an answer, so I just want to make sure.
Let me get that for you.
Maybe somebody else can help us with that.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I was just going to call on Rob Frost to comment on that or advise us on the, if you have any advice.
Thank you. I spoke with Director Brooks weeks ago about planning for this. We did not touch on the one-year plan, but she knew that this was subject to passing council tonight and she told me what they were going to do in planning was to let applicants know that their items may be heard at the April 1st agenda and I would assume, and of course I could be wrong, that she would take that into account for the one-year plan.
All the reports that are going forward in the Planning Commission this month are going to be heard on the 1st and the 15th. So as long as that meets your criteria, then we're good.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Gresham Smith to provide professional design services for the Magnolia Avenue Intersections Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $359,785.
Move to approve. Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes, is there anyone that could just speak very briefly at a high level as, about this, so the people that are in the audience would know what we're speaking of?
Yeah, I'll give a high level and then maybe Director Claybo can elaborate. We won this award grant from the federal government, Safe Streets for All, and Magnolia Avenue is one of the places where we do have a really high level of crashes, sometimes fatal, sometimes serious injury. And so this is going to be safety improvements for that. Mr. Claybo, could you elaborate a little bit on... The total amount of the award is, you know, much higher. This is for design elements, is that right?
Right, the total, Tom Claybo, engineering director, so the total grant amount was $10 million. This is a piece of that application. It includes intersection improvements at Cherry Street, at Castle Street, and North Hembry. And what we're finding, and what we want to address with this, is Magnolia is very typical of the state routes that we see through the city with a five-lane section. Total pavement width out there is about 70 feet. It's very difficult for pedestrians to make that maneuver with vehicles, conflicts there. So we're going to look at opportunities to implement countermeasures within the roadway to help pedestrians make it safely across those intersections.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, mayor. One concern I raised with Director Claybo and wanted more clarification on, what were, was about which intersections were chosen and what were plans for additional intersections along that roadway and appreciated the response that I got from engineering, really recognizing the number of serious incidents that we've seen along a stretch of Magnolia. And so this is a really important grant project, but only a small piece of the work that needs to be done. There's an intersection kind of between two of these intersections that have been chosen, which is Magnolia Harrison Street. And there's a hotel there. There's the warming center is practically right there on that corner. The, there's an urgent medical care space over there. And then across the street are food places. And so that is a precarious intersection where you often see people trying to cross there between like Captain Jack and that hotel. And even just having, you know, painted lines on the street, I think would do wonders in that area. But all I want to emphasize is, because I know there was a death there recently that came to mind when I saw this agenda item, is just that following this project or even concurrent to, we keep in mind the urgency behind safety needs at those other intersections and commit to moving forward on them in the near future.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary from Myo Vision Technologies Incorporated for the purchase of vehicle detection equipment hardware utilized at signalized intersections throughout the city for an initial one-year term with up to two one-year renewal options thereafter in an amount not to exceed $100,000 per year.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Parker?
I didn't get a chance to ask about this item and would love an overview and help understanding this technology. Who monitors it? How often?
Mr. Claybo?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. So this is a video detection for traffic signals. So we really utilize three different technologies for vehicle detection at signalized intersections. We have traffic loops that are cut into the pavement. We have these video detection cameras that detect vehicles. And then we have a microwave technology that does this. They all do the same thing. The intent is to detect when there's vehicles there and it actuates the signal to help with phasing and efficiency of the intersection.
So this system, similar to the next agenda item, it does not require monitoring. It works kind of automatically?
It does. We have, and I will say with the video detection, it's web-based and we do have, long-term, with our advanced traffic management systems, this will help us be able to implement traffic phasing for signals within the office. Right now, we've got to go to each controller and the intersections. And so long-term, when we get this connected with the fiber, we can do that from the office.
And then will we be able to link this into the real-time information center also?
The, we have a long-term plan for a traffic management center that would implement and we would be able to see video of different intersections to try to pick up if there's congestions or delays going on.
Got you, but not under this contract?
No.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Claybo, you mentioned a long-term plan for a traffic monitoring system or strategy. Can you, what's the horizon on that?
So we have several, it's really all the major corridors in Knoxville. We've got federal funds for that, which, as you know, that's a little bit longer process, but Chapman Highway is a good example of that. We would anticipate 2027, those being implemented. And that's, it's basically fiber optic cable that connects the signals. It's improved detection with these video cameras that allow us to make changes from a centralized location.
And the primary goal of that is safety, obviously, but secondarily is to move traffic.
Efficiency, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on item C? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Integrated Response Systems LLC for the on-call maintenance and repair of the city's inductive vehicle detection loops for traffic signals, increasing the annual contract amount by $25,000 for a new total annual contract amount not to exceed $70,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker?
Just a quick follow-up question to what we were discussing before. At one point, we were talking about these projects, you know, yes, in terms of efficiency and moving traffic, but also in terms of cutting down idling time and like reducing emissions in our city. Are we tracking that at all? Like how much we're reducing idling time at certain intersections?
Not currently. I think we will be able to do some of that once we get this technology implemented. And it, we do have projects ongoing for Broadway, Kingston Pike, Chapman Highway. So it's pretty much all the major corridors in the city.
Okay, cool, thanks.
I will add that we do have the capacity to assess that from our own, with our own fleet. And that's something I think our new, our Director of Sustainability will be able to try to work on in the coming years, but private vehicles are a little harder. Any further questions? Oh, Councilmember Helsley?
So it's your day in the barrel, Mr. Claybo. So on Chapman Highway, and this is just, you said 2027, but for now, are those like, I heard you say they weren't smart lights and so there's really nothing you can do except go to them and do whatever you do? Is that correct?
Well, we have, since the closure of Gay Street, we've taken a hard look at Chapman Highway because we knew some of that traffic would be directed over there. Since the fall, we've went through, our transportation folks, signals folks have went through and checked every intersection. The majority of those are these signal detection loops on the sides, under the pavement. We've made sure all those are functioning properly. Some of those weren't, so we got those corrected. We've also spent about $50,000 in communications upgrades. And that's really wireless technology that lets the signals talk to one another. And then the next thing we're going to do, actually within the next month, we've got a new signal timing plan we're going to implement. So we did traffic counts on every intersection along Chapman, down to Stone Road, from Blunt to Stone. And we're going to implement this new plan, which should help with platooning and efficiency through the signals.
Okay, because it seemed like you moved with the same 20 cars from lot to lot to lot. And it's just really kind of been kind of weird. So thank you so much. I'm working on being a traffic engineer.
Okay.
Councilmember Helsley, I just, you know, appreciate you bringing that up. You know, just, you know, sort of tangentially related to this item is, you know, we're very well aware of the additional traffic burden on Chapman Highway and the congestion that's called, that's created. So, you know, these and other, other plans, as Mr. Claybo just described, are in the works to do whatever we can to alleviate traffic, keep things safe and keep traffic moving along as safely as possible on Chapman, as long, as well as other places. But Chapman's a key corridor right now that's facing some higher levels of traffic.
So, and once again, if you know anybody with Waze or Google Maps, if you could keep them from sending people down Chapman Highway to the Greg Smokey Mountains, that would be helpful.
Will do. I'll call up my friends there.
It's true, it's true. I can go down Chapman Highway many times and every car I see is from out of state. I'm not exaggerating. And I had a friend tell me the other day they were in from out of town and it brought them down Chapman Highway to go to the mountains. Not that they're not welcome, but just not as a pass-through, you know. Stay away. Stay away, whatever, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
So I just wanted to follow up what Councilwoman Helsley just said. This is an odd comment thing. People are like, what? So lots of people, it's a federal highway. It's Highway 441. It goes from here to there. It goes a long ways. That's actually how my father came here to visit us. And so when Asheville washed out, we actually started taking that route down to Augusta, Georgia area and it uses half as much gas. So I always thought my dad was crazy, but he really was on to something. So anyway, there are old timers like my dad who liked to go that way and he would stop at all the stores and spend money and he loved going to the restaurants. So it's a thing.
Man before his time.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, mayor. And so I know that we're talking a lot about the safety things that are going to be put in place as far as vehicular traffic, but I also would love to see us, and I'm sure that's probably in the plan, to be working closely with Vision Zero because what I see is that we, as motors, we have to watch out for the pedestrians because people will walk out. They will not walk where they, cross where they should, even though that, yes, lanes do need to be restripped, those types of things. So maybe billboards, whatever, that's bringing people's attention to them as a pedestrian and their responsibility to be, to be staying within their realm and the walkways that are designated to keep them safe.
Absolutely. I think there's an additional signal being put in place at Fort, just south, you know, across from Kern's Bakery. I can't remember the name of the street. What's it called, Mr. Claybo?
Yeah, it's, so there's an existing signal there. We're just reworking that to introduce the apartment driveway in there as well, but it is for...
There's, there's a lot of work to be done to improve safety on all the streets of the city, but these state routes have had a lot more crashes. And just as a point of information, you know, a couple of agenda items ago, you approved some work on a Safe Streets for All grant on Magnolia. We were also awarded a even bigger Safe Streets for All grant on Chapman, I think about 18 million or so. And that, you know, will unfold over time to do more significant safety improvements, particularly for all kinds of transportation, motorists, pedestrians, and bikers. All right, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with US Bank National Association for Comprehensive Banking Services for a term of four years at an annual cost not to exceed $40,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to award an amount not to exceed $1,059,400 from the Affordable Rental Development Fund to Historic Giffen LP for the development of 36 affordable rental housing units to be located at 1834 Beach Street.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, you are familiar with this. Giffen School is really excited about this project. It's a huge positive step as we work to tackle the housing crisis in our city. This is a 98-year-old school that's been vacant for quite a while and this will be transformed into affordable housing units for seniors and families. The school's on the National Register of Historic Places, so it's great that it's going to be renovated and preserved. And there's also going to be two new buildings constructed. And the affordability term is significant, 30 years. So really appreciate the community members who participated in some meetings about this to make sure it was going to be consistent with the needs of the neighborhood, and appreciate the hard work of our Housing and Neighborhood Development staff as well. Mr. DeBose is here if you have any questions. Okay. Oh, you, this is not, this is different, too.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't even see that.
Well.
It's really light and small. Okay. Sorry. We have some speakers signed up for this.
Ben Case.
Is this one, eleven A? Okay.
Yes.
F, okay. First is Ben Case. Mr. Case, are you present? Thank you. If you could please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Good evening. My name's Benjamin Case. I live at 141 West Montgomery Street in Baltimore City, Maryland, and I'm happy to be here tonight. Thanks for having me. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of this resolution regarding Affordable Rental Development Fund support for the Historic Giffen Square development. Historic Giffen Square is the culmination of a broad effort to revitalize the Giffen Grammar School and return it to productive use as affordable housing. In 2022, Case Enterprises began working with Knox Heritage to pair their goal of saving the historic school building with our mission to deliver quality, affordable housing. The resulting project, Historic Giffen Square, delivers in both regards. It it restores 30,000 square feet historic building that that is there already and produces 77 units of affordable housing, 35 units within the existing building and 42 units spread across the additional two buildings. That synthesis, however, has only been possible thanks to the relationship that we formed with our neighbors in the South Haven community. Their collaboration helped us tailor the project to align with their vision for South Haven, a process that we formalized with the 2022 MOU, and it built a critical foundation of understanding and common purpose for our work. That's why we're here tonight. We're proud of the Historic Giffen Square development, and support from the Affordable Rental Development Fund is, fills a critical piece of the funding puzzle that makes the development possible. So, thank you for your consideration, and thanks to everybody from the city of Knoxville and the community who's worked with us to to make this project possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Next person signed up to speak is Kara Strauss. Ms. Strauss, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Yes, hi. Thank you. I'm Kara Strauss. I'm here to speak with you all on behalf of the South Haven neighborhood.
And could you provide your address, too?
Oh, yes, sorry. I'm at 3111 Sevier Avenue, just two blocks away from where this development will take place. So, we have never seen a developer work more closely with the neighborhood, and from anything to hearing the concerns about density, increase in traffic flow, infrastructure, the developers have altered their plans, heard community voice, decreased density of the structure, of the units or the units themselves, increased parking. The MOU to preserve includes preserving trees and some of the native wildlife around the historic building. So, the neighborhood is incredibly excited that this building's going to be a functional asset to the community, that a blighted space is going to be revitalized and useful. What am I missing? I mean, I think that that's it. Like, what more can you say? They've gone from asking, like, is this going to happen? Do we need this happen? And now, two weeks ago, we spoke about this in our neighborhood meeting, and they were asking, hey, when's that school going in? What's the update? When's the development going to start? So, they're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak. Anna Parmley. Anna Parmley, are you present? There you go. Now, if you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Hello, my name is Anna Parmley. I live at 3810 Sevierville Pike. Hi, Kara. I've never met you. Hello, neighbor. I bought my house in the, in the South Haven neighborhood a few years ago, in my early 30s. I hope to live there for a long time, so the way the neighborhood grows is really important to me, and I just am so excited to see something like this happen in my neighborhood. I walk past that abandoned school all the time with my dog. It's a very dead area. It looks like a gorgeous building, but it's completely dilapidated, and to see something like that go in my neighborhood would be really exciting. I've seen a lot of luxury housing go up in, in the South Knoxville area, and while that's great, it eventually has, you know, it will alleviate some upward pressure on house, housing prices in the area eventually, but I really would love to see some more affordable units in the neighborhood. South Knoxville's a great community, and I just want to allow more access to the great resources that we have there. Knoxville's put a lot of money into the urban wilderness area, and I just think if we could grant access to more people in that area of all income levels, that would be best for the city. So, again, I live in South Haven. I'm also on the Board of Yes Knoxville, so for multiple reasons, I would love to see this housing project go in. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, that concludes people signed up to speak on this item. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, this is a fine project for many reasons, the historic nature of an existing building that's got a history in that neighborhood, converting it, repurposing it to a housing project that will be more affordable, and so, you know, something I can obviously whole heartedly support. And Mr. Case, thank you so much for working with the neighborhood in the manner that you did. Look for other projects in Knoxville and come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to applaud this, everybody that was involved in this. I think it's, it's worth highlighting this for a number of reasons. One, all of the things that the speaker said earlier, but also, this is a planned development, so councils approved a few of these over the past few years, but this is a unique zoning application that is a good use here. The second is, is that this school, like most schools, sit in the middle of a neighborhood. So, this is a dense, low-income, affordable housing preservation in the middle of a neighborhood, and I'm especially proud, having gone to this school as a kid and also having lived on Beach Street across the street, that this will stay kind of the marker I remember for a long time. So, a lot of people in South Knoxville remember this thriving kind of central nucleus of the neighborhood, and and I'm just delighted to see it return. So, thank you for Director DeBose and your team. I know your team is here. I think some other, I learned about some other folks that attended Giffen tonight, so thank you for everybody's involvement in that. And I know KC DC has, has bent over backwards as well to, to make the math work. So, thank you for everybody involved. This is a big deal for South Haven, South Knoxville, and I think it's a model of what it looks like, what can be possible in any neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, was happy to see this project come before us, and I'm even happier now to hear from the neighborhood about how pleased they are about this development. So, that's really good to hear. One thing I wanted to point out is I'm really looking forward that affordability when projects come before me, and I've asked for, you know, projects that are even more affordable than that, than those accessible to those at 80% AMI. And so, I was happy to see the project-based vouchers that are tied to this, or low-income housing tax credits that are tied to this, that are making this available, at least the units that the city is subsidizing to those earning 60% and below. And so, I'm happy to see those lower-income units being a priority of our housing development, because it's so important. And when I was in, when I was in school in South Knoxville, my, you know, some of my folks in my neighborhood went to Giffen, so it's not too old. It's, it hasn't been gone that, that long, but it's been gone quite some time, and it's good to see this historic, beautiful building being put back into good use.
Thank you. Councilmember Helsley?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I'm really excited about this project. I live in the next neighborhood over, Southwood Lawn, but this was my elementary school, so I think everybody, I think you all should, Mr. Case, you should hang a picture of Ms. McCauley, who put the fear of God in every child there for six years of her life before we got to the middle school, but it's a great project, and I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I just, I'm curious, either from the developers or Mr. DeBose, whoever can answer the question, what the timeframe is for the project? What's the anticipated timeframe?
Mr. DeBose or Mr. Case?
Yeah, Mr. Case, you could come back up if you would like to respond to the question. And while you're walking up, here's what I'll say. We touched on this in a recent workshop. What's interesting is this, is the mix of studios and one bedrooms in addition to the two bedrooms, because a lot of newer developments only go for that three-two mix, whether it be houses or whatever. So, this is, when we looked at needs, whether it be people who are in homelessness or any mix, there's just not a lot meeting that market need, because it's just not advantageous to build units that small for, to serve one person.
Thanks for the comment, Councilmember. I think you're absolutely right. It's one of the things that community buy-in and a broad partnership has allowed us to do with this project, especially partnerships like KC DC. They allow us to have more flexibility in the range of units that we can provide and and have a project that that has that dynamic nature.
So, you're not forced to do three-twos?
Exactly, exactly. Which a lot of developers who really do care, they would like to do a broader unit mix. It's just hard to make the numbers work.
Right.
And so, we were able to on this one. Also, the historic building allows us to do that. It, you know, just, there are some, it wasn't created for housing, and so, some of those smaller units fit into spaces a little bit better than larger units, so sometimes they can go together well. As far as a timeline, that's something that's always flexible with us, and it does depend on our funding partners. Currently, I think a conservative timeline would be beginning of June. We could see construction start significantly earlier than that, but I, you know, I want to be straightforward with the city and with our neighbors and and not get out in front of our skis. But, but a matter of months, certainly not years.
Okay. All right. And then, once construction is started, that's the, the critical start point, what is your timeframe for wrapping things up? And are you doing it in phases, because you're building new buildings in addition to the existing?
So, we're looking at a couple of different build models with our construction team right now. I think recently, we've been leaning a little bit more towards one approach where we build simultaneously. That doesn't mean that all the units will come online at the same time, though. In the past, we've looked at bringing on some of those units in the historic building earlier, so we can get folks in there as early as possible, which we'd like to do. Currently, we have an 18-month build time. That could change, and so I also want to be straightforward that, you know, that's initial, and we, once we get all of our final subs selected for our build, we'll know sort of exactly, I mean, you know, anything can happen, but at least we'll have a time that we can commit to.
All right. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. And my question was for you as well, if you don't mind.
Mr. Case, you're, another question for you.
Coming back to the podium, in talking about the mix of units, that, that, do you have an idea now of kind of the layout for those units? Will it be all three bedrooms together and all one-unit bedrooms together?
So, it's, it's, it's going to be smaller units in the school building, just because of design, right? So, the studios and ones will be in the historic building, and then the twos and threes are going to be in the new construction building, and that's just a matter of essentially fitting spaces within other spaces.
Yeah.
You know, and, but, but they will be mixed within the buildings themselves.
And so, the units that are subsidized, you, you may find them in all three buildings, or do you think it'll just be in one building, or?
Well, this is an entirely affordable development capped at 60% AMI, and so, it, however, we do have some units that we expect to have project-based vouchers for, and they'll be spread across studios and three bedrooms, and so they'll be in different parts of, of the development.
Okay. So, the, the entire development is capped, is affordable at, at 60%, but there are, I don't know the number, maybe you know the number, but 77 total units, and then what was it, 32, 27, 36?
Yeah. So, Kevin DeBose, Housing and Neighborhood Development, the way we do gap financing is we only provide enough funding that is needed, and we tie those to units. So, our Affordable Rental Development Program allows us to contribute so much per unit to a project, and so, that 35 number is just related to gap financing. So, the whole deal is affordable. There is another 17 units that are project-based vouchers that, you will, you will love this, you know, will benefit those at 30% of the AMI. So, you know, this is a real substantial affordable housing development, so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and to clarify where I'm getting at is, you know, I'm, I'm pushing for mixed-income housing, and when we push for that mixed-income housing, making sure that those incomes are mixed together, right? And we don't have a nice fancy building over here with the higher-income folks, and then the lower-income folks are put over here. So, those are, that's the reason behind my question, but in asking, I found out even more than I was asking about, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Of course.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you. Last comment. It's just a, a good reminder that this school has sat empty for 20-something years. Galbraith School is another school in South Knoxville that's sat empty for 30 years. Sure, there's some other school, Rule High School is now, you wait long enough, you get another school, so it's, yeah, I think, what I just want to elevate is, we've had this discussion, Mayor, is between the city mayor and the county mayor, when we close schools, it, in the past, has been a 20, 30-year blight death sentence, and so I just, I would just encourage the city and county to continue to collaborate, that when a school closes, we collect, particularly within the city limits, we, we move together to replace it with something, so that it doesn't sit empty with, yeah.
Yeah.
Because what becomes a, and what is an asset can quickly become a liability, and anyways, just, schools don't have a good history of being reactivated well in our community, and just we should all care about that.
I agree 100%. Councilmember, if you could.
For the same reason the mayor agrees. I agree. It's difficult when the Board of Education closes a building. They have nothing to do with it and no funds really to maintain it, so it, it is now becoming fashionable to live in old buildings, and that is the thing that's really helping incentivize and drive historic preservation, is helping people want to live in and revitalize these old, these old schools. So, it is, is perfect timing, and it's a great use for them, because school systems have nothing else, no other use for them, and for a long time, it wasn't an attractive or financially viable way to put a new, a building like that back on the market, so this is a great thing. Sorry it took 20 years, but now we've got several models of how this can happen, so hopefully, I'm with you, Vice Mayor, hopefully, we do this much more often.
Yeah, and there's some success stories along the way. Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, just briefly, again, a lot of these old schools architecturally, they're very appealing, and they fit into the neighborhood, and they have the history, and it would just be a shame to demolish those and put them in a landfill and then, then build something in their place that doesn't have those aesthetics, so.
It's been an absolute pleasure partnering with the city, so if you have any other buildings that you want us to work on, please let us know.
Yeah, well, there's, there's properties that we know of. We do not currently own them, and so, yeah, that's the, that's the trick. So, there are some schools that are going to be surplused over to Knox County in the next couple of years, and we will certainly, the county is already well aware that we hope that they end up like a Brownlow or Oakwood or something where there's not like a long period of dilapidation, where they get repurposed quickly, and we will alert you and other potential redevelopers when, when those properties become. when, when those properties become available or hopefully, or other people might come to us as well. So, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any or documents to award an amount not to exceed $200,000 in historic preservation program funds to Jennifer Hatar and Khalid Hatar to support property improvements to historic property located at 217 East Scott Avenue within the limits of the city of Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and second it. We have one person signed up to speak in favor, Sean Boland. If you could state your name and address for the record and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Sean Boland, 115 East Scott Avenue. I'm speaking here today as a representative for the Old North Knoxville Association. This property has been a nuisance and a blight for decades. No one's lived there for over 20 years. There have been break-ins, there's been vandalism, and it looked like a hopeless project until the Hatars stepped up to, to save this property from demolition. So not only does the neighborhood support the project, we also support the funds that are going to this revolving loan to help these dilapidated projects actually get completed, become an asset again, make it livable. And with that said, I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Boland. If, if they have questions, we'll, we'll bring you back up to the podium. Thank you. Counsel, that concludes people who've signed up to speak to this agenda item. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is about how this conditional loan works. Can we get a bit of an overview of how that works?
Mr. DeBose?
Kevin DeBose Housing and Neighborhood Development. So this is a short-term loan repayable within one year. And, you know, this is meant to aid developers who often can't get front-end financing. And once, you know, the property's up to code and they can get a good appraisal, they can get permanent financing. And that's when we're paid.
I think it's great because these are properties that need improvements. Our neighborhoods need these properties to be improved. But once improved, are likely to hold some value. And so I think it's, it's reasonable for this to be a loan, in my opinion. I think it's a, I think it's a great resource for the community.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Ryder?
I, I just was going to note that these are new neighbors that have not met. And so look forward to meeting them. And on that note, I will abstain and recuse myself from discussion or voting as it is directly abutting my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Lake Shore Park Conservancy in order to provide budgetary support for janitorial and mowing costs associated with managing Lake Shore Park in annual amounts not to exceed $216,395.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Purple Horse Hospitality to provide golf management services at Whittle Springs Golf Course and Knoxville Uministerial Golf Course for an annual amount not to exceed $280,000.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if Ms. Ely is here or?
Yes, she is here and so is the person, you know, the contractor, contractee.
Yeah, so this is, I'll give Ms. Ely some time to walk up. This is a new vendor at this very historic golf course. And so it looks like they responded to the RFP or the bid request. So just wondering if there's anything different to expect or just a continuation, but different vendor supplier.
Ms. Ely, go ahead.
Cheryl Ely, Director Parks Recreation. I think it's a little bit of both. So we worked with them, they've kind of, well, they put in a bid. And one of the things they looked at is how to move our golf courses forward, looking at different options, different techniques. And so they provided that information. One of them was really looking at our golf study, which we paid for and, and had selected. And so following some of those categories and seeing what is possible through the, following that study.
All right, well, very excited to have a new company at the helm then.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so these were both?
Yes, ma'am, those were on consent. 12A is an emergency ordinance to amend the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Motion made to approve and second it. We have three people signed up to speak on this item. Bless you. First is Webster Bailey. Mr. Bailey?
Hello, Webster Bailey, Executive Director of Metro Drug Coalition. Address is 530 West Fifth Avenue, Knoxville, 37917. I've prepared some remarks, but also before I make my remarks, I just want to recognize I've got about a quarter of Metro Drug Coalition's workforce here with me and we almost have a whole row here tonight. So pretty proud of that. Appreciate all the work that all of you do. Good evening, council members. I'm here to speak in support of Agenda Item 12A. Metro Drug Coalition strongly supports the city's decision to allocate $300,000 to the Knoxville Police Department as part of a comprehensive, multi-tiered approach to addressing the opioid crisis. Law enforcement plays a critical role in reducing the illegal supply of opioids and responding to the devastating consequences of substance misuse in our community. The proposed funding will help KPD enhance investigative abilities, capabilities, improve overdose response and increase training opportunities to better address the complexities of the opioid crisis. A comprehensive response to the opioid crisis is absolutely necessary and we commend the city's balanced approach in this 12A item, which would distribute opioid abatement funds across multiple sectors, prevention, emergency response, as well as law enforcement. Addressing the opioid epidemic requires a collaborative response and KPD's efforts to disrupt illegal supply chains complement the prevention, recovery, and harm reduction efforts being implemented by Metro Drug Coalition, Knoxville Fire Department, and other community organizations. These investments are critical in reducing the availability of illicit substances while also ensuring that those struggling with addiction receive the support that they need. KPD's proposed use of funds will enhance public safety and provide them with valuable investigative tools which will improve the department's ability to investigate and respond to opioid-related crimes effectively. These efforts will ultimately enhance public safety and help reduce overdose deaths in Knoxville. Metro Drug Coalition has a long history of working alongside KPD and KFD to address substance misuse in Knoxville. This funding will ensure that KPD has the necessary tools and training to continue collaborating with organizations like ours, Metro Drug Coalition, as well as the Knox County Health Department and treatment providers in our area so they can connect individuals to the appropriate resources. Success of our collective efforts depends on well-equipped first responders and law enforcement professionals who understand the complexities of addiction and who are equipped to deal with it from a law enforcement perspective when it shows up in our community, which is all day, every day. In Tennessee, the Opioid Abatement Council has allocated approximately 15% of the state's opioid abatement funds to primary prevention efforts. And that is consistent with what is being proposed in this amendment. And we appreciate that consideration and thought about prevention. The opioid crisis is an ongoing challenge that requires sustained investment across multiple sectors and MDC appreciates that the city has committed additional funding in the FY 25-26 budget to support community-based initiatives addressing substance misuse. Let me close by stating again that Metro Drug Coalition fully supports the city's allocation of opioid abatement funds and urges the council to approve this funding as part of a broader effort to combat substance misuse in Knoxville. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Ellen Zaviska. Ms. Zaviska, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today. Ellen Zaviska, 3118 Fairview Street. And I serve on the Board of Yes Knoxville, which is a nonprofit dedicated to increasing opportunities and access to housing and transportation throughout the city. I was before you two weeks ago and as I said then, we're very appreciative of this willingness to invest in the reopening of Gay Street Bridge as a, as a facility for people walking and rolling, which in this budget amendment, of course, includes $2 million to, to make that happen. I also appreciated the conversation at the last meeting about the possibility of allowing transit vehicles on the bridge. That would be, that would be a great addition if it's possible. Also, the conversation about creating a safer, more accessible connection to Sevier Avenue on the south side. I've biked up that hill. It's a steep one. I recommend an e-bike if you're going to do it, especially if you're middle-aged like me. Also note that two weeks ago, when you all discussed the Gay Street Bridge, there was a conversation about replacing it at some point with another bridge that would carry once again motor vehicles. That decision will likely be made by a future administration and a different council. But this administration may choose to begin laying the groundwork for that. So I wanted to discuss it just a little bit. So first off, the cost of that, the figure that came up last meeting was approximately $80 million. Of course, in 10 years with inflation, that could be significantly more, possibly 100 million or more. The possibility of seeking federal funds for that replacement bridge was discussed. I've worked in transportation for 20 years, but I'm not going to try to predict what the landscape will look like in federal transportation funding in 10 years. I wouldn't try to predict what it's going to look like next week, honestly, given what's going on. But the likelihood that there would be a program that would grant 80 to 100 million dollars to replace a bridge solely to restore vehicle traffic on a low-volume local street is, I would guess, not great. Again, anything's possible, but I wouldn't bet the farm. So the other alternative, of course, is to look at federal dollars that flow to the Knoxville Regional TPO. They get just under 14 million or so a year in flexible surface transportation block grants. That's 14 million a year for the whole region. So you're probably not going to fund the bridge with that. So that leaves local money. And a future administration may well decide that it's worth that 80 to 100 million dollars to replace a bridge that carries 7,000 cars a day. And I'll note that that traffic number has been trending downward. TDOT has traffic count data on their website. That bridge peaked in 2004, carrying about 9,700 cars a day. And as I noted, it's down, was down before it closed to about 7,000 cars a day. So I'll just note what else the city could do with that 80 to 100 million dollars. Of course, you all just approved a great affordable housing project. I looked at the details of that. It looked like it was the unit cost of about 300,000 per unit. So 80 to 100 million could get you 250 to 300,000 units of affordable housing. A lot more units, of course, if it were just subsidizing private development as opposed to building it outright. Greenways are nice. Of course sidewalks are nice. Those can cost 2 to 3 to 4 million dollars a mile. Less if you're using local dollars than federal dollars. So, you know, 50 more miles of greenways would be nice. And they would, I would venture to guess, carry more than 7,000 people walking and cycling a day. So just urge you to think about the opportunity costs of putting tens of million dollars into a bridge that carries 7,000 cars versus, you know, the possibility to create a lot more transportation and housing choices in the city or any other nice things we want to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Cynthia Finch. Ms. Finch, if you could come to the podium. State your name and address for the record and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Good afternoon. Cynthia J. Finch, 104 Lakeside Avenue, Knoxville. I am the President of the Burlington Business District Association in Burlington. I am also the Executive Director of New Directions Healthcare Solutions, which is located at 104 Lakeside. I am joined tonight with Burlington residents, businesses, friends, and including the Executive Director of Connect Ministry, Ms. Kira Wyatt. I am here tonight to say thank you to the City Council and the city of Knoxville, especially our city mayor. She said at the announcement of the Burlington Fire Hall that will soon be starting sometimes, she said, "This is Burlington's time." This truly is Burlington's time. As you can see, I have my button on. I love Burlington. We have others who have a button on. Ms. Kira, would you stand? Councilwoman, would you stand? She has a button on. We love Burlington. And we are so happy that there are all these things that's going to happen in Burlington, like our new fire hall that has been announced. The Streetscape project that will soon happen was acceptable signs and polls that will enable us to light up Burlington at Christmas and hang banners. And we really appreciate the work of David Brace and his staff and Councilwoman McKenzie, Councilwoman Parker, regarding the collaboration with the Greyhound Bus Station. That is a serious problem there, but we're encouraged. Thank you for the meeting this week. And Mr., Ms. Mayor, we thank you for announcing that this is Burlington's time. And we thank you for all that you're doing and look forward to the progression and all the progress that's going to happen in Burlington. We love Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Finch. Councilmembers, that concludes everyone who signed up to speak to this item. Just wanted to highlight a few things before we go on. I just wanted to say that, as you all know, we've been talking about the Gay Street Bridge for, you know, a little while now, since I guess June 25th. And I am very excited that we now have a plan to make repairs so that we can restore as much capacity as possible on the existing bridge for $2 million, if you all approve this tonight. But I do want to let you know that we are working right now concurrently with these repairs on a plan for a long-term replacement. We need to know what the cost will be. We need to identify funding partners and how much time it would take. We will be working on that, but meantime, we want to get it fixed. We do know that no matter what the final replacement strategy is, it's going to be many, it's going to take many years. And so that's why I appreciate your consideration and support of moving forward with the $2 million repairs tonight. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, one of the items is in regard to Legacy Parks and the city having an agreement to expand InSkil Park. I, full disclosure, I'm on the board of Legacy Parks without remuneration. And, but I support this and I will be voting on it and it's very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. If my colleagues will entertain, I would actually like to divide this question. And my motion that I'm proposing is not to divide it, as I've asked before, into each, each individual item. But if we could just divide the question into the three sections. One is capital funds, one is operating funds, and then the last section about transfer of personnel positions. And vote on those three issues.
Okay, so you're making a motion to divide the question?
Yes, please.
Okay, Councilmember Parker moves to divide the question as she just described. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion to divide? Oh, it's not debatable. All those in favor of the motion to divide, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, it fails. Next item, Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank all of the organizations that are listed here that came out this evening to stand before council and to speak. I think that I saw some board members from MDC. You guys may not have seen that are here. If you're here, would you please raise your hand? I think one of them may have left.
Metro Drug Coalition.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Ms. Tanisha Fitzgerald Baker. I do want to say that we, as a council, have been talking about Burlington and previous councils before us for quite some time, and so it is very exciting to see that we are really going to see some significant movement in Burlington and finally be able to bring some closure to this conversation. I think we've been talking about it for at least 10 years, if not more, and even with the "I love Burlington" concept, this was something that has been about 10-plus years as well. And so it really feels good, it should to us as a council, to the mayor's administration, and I can assure you that it feels good to the community in East Knoxville and in Burlington. So just wanted to acknowledge that, and as well as all the other folks who are receiving some funding and the good work that's being done. Thank you.
Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I appreciate your comments about we're already making the repairs, you know, in this Gay Street Bridge. I've heard a lot of interest, you know, in my district as well as others about the ability to use it as a pedestrian thoroughfare while we're in this repair phase and can't use vehicles anymore. But I also really appreciate your statement that work is beginning on, you know, getting a replacement for the bridge, so I do appreciate that. I did want to ask, and I'm not sure if maybe Chief of Staff Brace might be the right person to ask this question of, but could we talk a little bit about what those next steps are in the process for, you know, replacement to Gay Street Bridge?
Yeah. Councilmember Roberto, I think the next steps are, first, repair it, and second, we're working with Gresham Smith to get an evaluation of what the cost might be, and part of that is to find out what the cost of similar bridges have been. And, you know, there's a lot of questions, you know, repairing it. Our engineers have told us it's not possible. I don't know if Mr. Claybo has anything else to add, but the next steps are find out approximately what the cost would be to replace it, but then the location of it and the funding. I think the best context in the near term, in the next month or so, will be how have similar bridges been built, with what funding sources, and what was the timeframe? You know, when was James White Parkway Bridge built? How much did it cost? And who paid for it? It's my understanding it was 100% funded by not the city, state and federal sources. But those are the kinds of things that we can get immediate context for and then more context. But, you know, Ms. Zaviska actually, you know, pointed out that it'll likely have to go through a TPO evaluation and that sort of thing. So I know you sit on the Transportation Planning Organization Board, so, you know, those projects do not go at lightning speed, but you got to start somewhere, and that's what we will be doing.
Yeah, and I mean, I thought your information that you gave us on the bridge, you know, I didn't, I knew that the Gay Street Bridge, you know, was an older bridge, but I didn't recognize it was 127 years old. And the Henley Street Bridge is 95 years old. And as far as I could tell, it looked like the bridge crossing the river on James White Parkway is 42 years old. So we have some pretty old infrastructure. So I think as we're also looking at this, you know, temporary repair for Gay Street, looking at a replacement, we should probably also be thinking about some of that other aging infrastructure that we have as well. And I know you've been a big advocate for, you know, looking at, you know, repairs and fixing infrastructure as we've been going through, you know, a lot with, you know, water and pipes and things like that. And we have a lot of infrastructure we need to pay attention to, so I just wanted to raise that up as, you know, we do have some older infrastructure we need to pay attention to as well. Thank you.
I agree. And we will keep council and the community informed as we have information. You know, we're working as hard as we can. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. There are a lot of reasons to support this, and I just wanted to kind of call out a couple for the first district. Obviously, the Gay Street Bridge we've talked about, but Montgomery Village, making an investment in that community. I think there's a long-term vision that is bubbling up soon. Mr. Bentley, shout out to KCDC, but we have Western Heights envy in South Knoxville, so I think that's around the corner. But in the near term, playgrounds for those kids are very important. The Severe Avenue Streetscapes Project and the supporting funds, I want to thank particularly Mr. Brace for being receptive to learnings from the Cumberland Avenue merchants and just the call for additional support during such a transformational project. And just a shout out to Burlington. Even though I didn't get a pin, I plan to support this. I'm just kidding. I'm a little bit jealous of Burlington, but I'm really glad to see progress, momentum really pick up for Burlington, so, yeah, I'm happy about that, too. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith, I do want to just add, you mentioned Montgomery Village. When we did a canvas, that's one of our three Project TLC areas, and when we canvassed back when we first started out doing this Project TLC, we asked people, you know, what would make them feel safer, what would make their community safer, and one of the most frequent answers was a playground for kids. There's not really a playground there right now. And so I'm really pleased that we can move forward with that, and I know long-term, there's some maybe bigger plans for Montgomery Village over the, you know, in the coming years for a bigger renovation, but when you're a parent of little kids, you know, five years is forever. You know, they won't be using a playground. If they're five now, you know, maybe by 10, they're less interested in playing on a playground. So trying to get moving forward on that sooner rather than later is really good for the Montgomery Village neighborhood, so just wanted to highlight that. Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you, Mayor. One question and then comments. When we talked about working with Gresham to get kind of an idea, will we be needing to do any kind of contract amendment? Does that require, I mean, in terms of, I know if the scope of work gets bigger, we may have to do something, but under their current contract, can they give us some kind of ballpark? Is that what you're asking?
Mr. Claybo, I think you said the answer is we can do it under the current contract.
That's correct. We have enough room in the contract to do a high-level study.
Thank you. I just want everybody to understand that, that they won't necessarily be coming back to us for more money for a contract extension unless the scope of work that we ask for them becomes much more detailed. I do think, I agree with Councilman Roberto, too, that I think the infrastructure issue is real across the entire country, city, county, everywhere. We built a whole lot of stuff 40 to 100 years ago, and now it's all getting older. But James White was not, James White Parkway, I do not know, I'm not an expert on this, that wasn't a city-funded project. Neither was the Henley Street Bridge, because that's a state highway. Same thing with Buck Carnes Bridge. So I do think what makes the Gay Street thing unique is it is the only one that is a two-lane kind of road, and I know that if we look at a longer-term project, there will be traffic studies. Is it warranted? I just want the community to be reassured that doing $2 million is what we have to do now so it can be used at all, and that is too valuable an asset to not be used at all. And look at those concrete barriers and orange and white signs across it that say, that's not very appealing to our downtown welcoming environment. So I think that's a great first thing to do. I plan to support this because of that, but also want to reassure people that the idea of replacing it comes with a whole lot more thought, study, research. It's not going to be people just saying, "We're going to do it, and we're going to go find the money." It's not that easy. It will be a well-thought-out process, but one that needs to be considered as we look at all our transportation from one side of the city across the river to our neighborhoods in South Knoxville. And I too love Burlington, like, you know, I think we all do. But what I would say is everybody on city council loves every part of our city, and that's why we serve, and it's really exciting to see so much good stuff happening all over our city in different communities. So I just wanted to end on a positive note, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, in regard to the bridge, I feel very comfortable with the amount that we're allocating to get to the next level, and I was pleased that we're looking at restoring at least public transportation to the bridge, because I think that'll help, to some degree, alleviate the loss of vehicular traffic, and in the future, we can decide what else. But I think if we can just make some nod to vehicular traffic, but the public transportation aspect, I think that's very reasonable. And I'm going to pile on on Burlington. I've been talking about it for 10 years, too. But going back to an earlier agenda item, Burlington with the structures that are there and the possibility of repurposing them, and they met the criteria that we talked about earlier on the school, where you've got existing buildings that have interesting architecture, they've got history, they've been part of that neighborhood. And so one of these days, I hope everything lines up, that that place can be vibrant and kind of a little community center there, and I would like to see a jazz club in it. I think it would be the perfect place.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Parker and then McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. So prior to this agenda item, I've reached out and everyone received information about what items are coming before us in this ordinance that are one-time cost and which ones would be recurring. And that's part of the reason why I wanted to divide the question, because I wanted to remove those items that are recurring expenses. For me, and I realize others disagree, but for me, I'm not a fan of these budget amendments, especially on an emergency ordinance. There's no reason for this to be an emergency ordinance. But what it does is it limits the public notice of these changes to come and the public's ability to participate in these discussions and come to these meetings and say, "Hey, where are these, you know, thousands of dollars coming from for these two parks when my neighborhood's been asking for it for however long?" You know, those are the types of conversations you can have during a budget cycle when you have all the numbers presented at once. When we do these one-off budget amendments, it's hard to gauge how equitable these investments are around the city. That's the main reason why I don't agree with it. But then when it comes to recurring cost, it's hard to gauge how fiscally responsible this is, because I don't have anything else to measure it by, and I don't know what new recurring costs are going to be proposed coming up in just two months. I was, you know, happy to see the work for Burlington. It's long overdue. I've been pushing it for adequate investment in Burlington since I've been elected and been very disappointed that we drug our feet on investing in Burlington. So those are investments that I support. The repairs to the Gay Street Bridge as a short-term solution are investments that I support, but there are other amendments in here that I do not support, including the opioid money. And I'm so disappointed tonight to hear the words from MDC about use of the opioid grant, because things are getting real, and things are about to get even realer in our community under our current federal leadership, and we need good allies in our community. During my day job, I do international human rights work, and what folks are ramping up for is an increased violence in the countries that surround us because of the ramped-up war on drugs that this current president wants to launch. And we just never win. Communities never win when we overinvest in law enforcement to deal with addiction issues, to deal with illegal substances in our communities. And so I'm so disappointed. And I will reach out to meet, because we haven't met yet, and so I welcome the opportunity to learn more about your perspective. I welcome that opportunity to learn more about your perspective, but I'm really concerned, especially following our recent meetings where we awarded money to our co-response teams to inappropriately investigate while they're supposed to be responding to an emergency call from someone in crisis. We gave them money to conduct investigations, opioid investigations, while they're supposed to be in the field serving folks in crisis who've called 911 for help. So I'm very disappointed, and that is an area of funding that I don't support. And let me be clear on this. I'm not saying there should be no law enforcement involvement. I'm saying I'm seeing an overinvestment in law enforcement solutions when it comes to the opioid crisis in our community. It's an overinvestment. We've got to pursue this issue in a different way, and we've all got to be a part of that solution.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie and then Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to ask Chief Sharp as well as Chief Noel, just an estimate, if you can, as relates to fire department and the police department, as it relates to opioid calls, overdoses, those types of things, if you can just give an estimate of what, I'm sure that we have the numbers from last year, that calls that you all have been on.
Chief Sharp?
Yeah, I don't have the exact figures right now, but I know it's well over 1,000 overdose calls that we run on an annual basis, and we saw it starting to increase about 10 years ago and just keep going up. At one point, we had a plateau, and then after the pandemic, it leveled off and then it started again, and now we're well over 1,000 calls every year.
1,000 calls per year?
Yes.
Chief Noel?
We roll on a lot of the same calls, but we also deal with a lot of calls with individuals that are varying stages of crisis, whether it's drug addiction, you know, chronic mental illness or combination of those, so it consumes a fair amount of the calls that we go on. I don't have an exact cost estimate for you, but we do go on a fair amount of calls.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. When we were voting on the grant application a couple weeks ago, on the monies going towards the co-responder model, and I was deeply against it when I first heard about it, after that, I started doing, I talked with a lot of people that are on the opioid abatement council, and they've given this money to other cities in Tennessee for the same reason, for co-responders, and it's been having good results. So that was why on the second time I was in favor of it. But I am wondering what this $400,000 would be going for with the police department and prevention.
Chief Noel?
Sure. So this money, a bulk of this money is going toward enforcement. So $200,000 would go for a van that we would use for the surveillance of wholesale and retail narcotics traffickers, technology that we would use to assist in drug investigations, $29,000 for partner communication, which will really outfit our roll call room with technology to be able to- to be able to hold virtual meetings, intelligence meetings with our federal partners, $7,500 to upgrade our existing pole cameras from 4G cell service to 5G cell service, $20,000 for training for our officers for drug recognition training and DUI detection to help our officers be able to do DUI detection, not just for alcohol, but for being intoxicated due to drugs. And $10,000 to decontaminate our existing police vehicles. We do have instances where our vehicles get contaminated by fentanyl and we have to bring in a private company to decontaminate them.
So I think these are things that are related to fentanyl and drug addiction, but it doesn't fall into the preventative category. One of the reasons I was so on board with the co-response model is that was directly getting people into out of bad situations, the whole leave behind program. There were a lot of pluses to that, but that's not what I see with this $400,000. It seems more like police work. And if we are gonna have this huge funding of war on drugs, which, who knows? We don't know what's happening right now. I think monies will be coming for that. What they won't be coming for is to actually assist drug addicts and not criminalize it. So that's my concern on that.
I would just add, as a point of information, these settlement dollars that we get directly to the city are largely to reimburse us for the costs that we incur as we respond through our Police Department and Fire Department to overdoses, to drug crimes, and so forth. There's also a much larger pot of money from Knox County and then even a larger pot of money to the state, like, you know, exponentially larger, that we encourage the, you know, other nonprofits and so forth to apply. We also have a portion of our city settlement dollars that we have distributed through a process sort of similar to the community agency grants, which have gone directly towards prevention. I think, I can't remember some of the recipients who've gotten that, but it includes like navigators of people who have been experiencing substance misuse disorder and they meet with people in an emergency room to help them, you know, track into therapy and rehab right away. And some of the other, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we've shared out as much as, you know, a lot beyond, you know, towards community and prevention and harm reduction. But we need to reimburse ourselves. We've incurred costs well beyond what the settlement has covered. And so I think we need to prioritize our own and help the community, which we're doing, it's a balance. But, you know, I don't disagree with you. Prevention's important, but so is law enforcement and so is, you know, the acute emergency medical care that we provide when people are having an overdose. Like, that's something that is beyond prevention.
Things with very little money, I think. And getting reimbursed is very important. But I also see these opioid monies as not just reimbursing the cities that were damaged, but the individuals that were hurt and the family structures that were hurt. And that's why I'm always talking about prevention monies going into the people who have been harmed by it directly and are suffering and trying to get off of that, get out of that hell that they're in and get treatment.
Thank you. Any... Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on Councilwoman Singh's comments and yours as well. I don't know where all this documentation is pulled together, or maybe it's possible, but the nonprofits in our community that receive opioid dollars, I would like to see what city dollars they're receiving, what county dollars they're receiving, and what state dollars they're receiving.
Well, we sent out, I think Fiona McAnally sent out a summary of city dollars that have been spent. Knox County has a webpage that says real explicitly who got what. And the state of Tennessee also has a website.
Because I believe Helen Osmond recently just got some state dollars.
McNabb has gotten some. A lot of other organizations have. I mean, I don't remember, but a lot of nonprofits and people doing work in intervention and also on the impact on families have gotten these dollars. And again, our pot of money is like in the hundreds of thousands. Everyone else's pots of money is in the millions. So we are encouraging people to apply to the larger pots of money and we're giving out what we can, you know, after we reimburse ourselves for the costs.
Perhaps I'll, yeah, I'll pull it together myself. I think it would be a good view to see...
Well, I can certainly have Ms. McAnally send the links to those sites. So you guys, because they're pretty complicated, like...
Fair enough.
But in the state ones, you know, you can see by region, you know, West Tennessee, Middle Tennessee, East Tennessee. And those grant cycles, I think, are three-year versus ours have been more frequent, because, you know, we want to help people as soon as possible. And anyhow.
All right, thank you.
We'll share those links with you all later this week. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Eight-one, motion carries eight-one. Thank you, Metro Drug Coalition staff, and thank you, other people who are here for the budget amendment. We appreciate your advocacy. Goodbye to our UT students. Next item, please.
12B is an ordinance appropriating the total sum of $21,394.06 from the Parks and Recreation Department's Grants and Medevilence Fund, noting same for completed projects to various qualified organizations as part of the Challenge Grant Award Program.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C, or rather, 12C is an ordinance to amend ordinance number O-107-2019, known and cited as the City of Knoxville zoning code, to remove a previously approved planned district designation from property located at Zero Millard Beats Road, Millard Beats Development LLC, applicant second district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the owner of the property available to talk about this project?
Is the owner of the property at Zero Millard Beats Road present?
I had a conversation with them earlier today.
I don't think they're here.
But I don't think anyone's here. The reason I had a conversation with them was that, thanks to one of the amendments we had made during the planning process, there's that page where you check a box whether you talk to the neighbors or not. And so that one is marked no. So I had concerns about not having discussions with the neighbors. But in the phone call, I was assured that they have spoken with the neighbors about this. And so I was really hoping they'd be here to talk to us about it. But we'll see them again in two weeks and we can talk to them about it at that point as well. So thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
12D is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 6200 Paper Mill Drive from CG3 District to CH2 District, Benjamin C. Mullins, applicant second district.
Motion made to approve and second it. Councilmembers, there are two people signed up to... Oh.
He's available for questions.
Benjamin Mullins is here, if you have questions. Mr. Mullins, somewhere here. There you are, okay. But you don't wish to speak unless there's questions, okay? Are there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have several people signed up to speak at public forum. First is Mary Ann Garner. Mary Ann Garner, if you could, you're already at the podium. State your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Yes, thank y'all for letting me speak tonight. As you said, my name is Mary Ann Garner. My husband and I reside at 925 Cherokee Boulevard. We were born and raised in Tennessee and have lived in West Tennessee, Middle and East. I'm sure we all want Knoxville to be the best city in Tennessee. I've been asked by city services to suggest several things regarding preventing parking violations. This is a safety issue. The main issue seems to be contractors that are parking all over the city. And I've been on the phone several days and it seems to be confusing who enforces this and gives the fines. But I, as I said, was asked for some suggestions. I believe at the permitting stage that this can be addressed with the contractors and either escrow or some kind of deposit made. And at the final, before the final permits are issued, that can be discussed if all the requirements were made. Instead of just, you know, the Police Department has plenty of stuff to do besides going around and giving citations and fines and, you know, that kind of thing. But it is a safety issue, because pedestrians can be run over, you know, be run over by these vehicles that are parking on both sides of the road. It's just very disconcerting. Also, the contractors could have carpooling with several subs, if that's what they do. They can obviously park in driveways, park on side streets in some instances, park them in public places like parks. And I've even contacted churches and intend to contact parking lots that are owned by different entities to see if that's a possibility. Signs on different areas of the city where parking is obviously not allowed. In addition, we have had the opportunity to speak concerning the permit office, where we have a very small project being started at our home. It's been very confusing, because the contractor has not gone by the drawings that were given and the permit issued on that. But I won't bore y'all with the details. I'm sure y'all'd all like to get home to your families. I'm requesting an ordinance that was passed in December to be codified so that the Police Department and whoever needs to address the issues, instead of if they can give a warning fine, if they can give a fine, fine. But if drastic measures need to be taken to finalize that ordinance that was passed in December. I would like to thank my councilman Andrew Roberto and Lynn Fugit for listening and looking into our concerns. I moved from Middle Tennessee several years ago, where growth is rampant and continues to be. And I've seen that and would love to do anything I can to help and offer any suggestions. And I'm sure everybody is wanting this to be the best city. And I just thank y'all for your service and Jar Great City. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Larry McAfee. Mr. McAfee, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Larry McAfee, 3333 Clery Street, employee, we're up for the Knoxville Fire Department. I'd go on record, say Knoxville Fire Department loves Burlington as well and all of our other communities. Last night, I found myself tossing and turning and unable to sleep. My mind was consumed with what I was gonna say tonight and how I was gonna present it. It's very important that I convey that we must invest in our firefighters. We're not standing here asking for more money out of greed. Like everyone, we're feeling the weight of inflation and the impact it's had on the economy. During the budget retreat, for the third year in a row, we've heard how inflation has affected the city. Well, your employees are feeling the same. Four years ago, Madam Mayor, you set out with courage and conviction to make the city of Knoxville a preferred employer. A key part of that effort included pay increases. You spent significant capital, political capital, to make it happen, especially knowing that there was a reelection year coming up. For that, we are grateful. Thank you. You made a difference in our lives. But none of us knew what was coming. We didn't know that those gains were gonna be lost due to inflation. I prayed long and hard about what to say tonight. And then in those quiet moments throughout today, I had a vision. In this vision, Chief Sharp and his command staff sat before you and your team, and they delivered a powerful presentation, laying out the Knoxville Fire Department's financial needs with clarity and purpose. They presented the numbers, shared real-world scenarios. And by the end of that great presentation, you were moved. You knew deep in your heart what needed to be done to help the men and women of the Knoxville Fire Department and to make the Knoxville Fire Department be a preferred department, not just in name, but in reality. In this vision, you were inspired to act. You wanted to show the men and women of the Knoxville Fire Department that they were a top priority. And in your proposed budget was a testament to that commitment. Madam Mayor, we're here tonight with hope and gratitude, believing that this vision will become a reality, not just for us, but for the entire city that we serve. Keep in mind, every call is answered, no matter when, nobody where. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for your leadership, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Ramsey Cisneros. Ramsey Cisneros, are you present? Okay. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Ramsey Cisneros, I live at 1117 Cornelia Street, Knoxville. Today, I'm presenting to the city that we open public transportation more. I think it's kind of absurd that I can't go to an international airport that's 20 minutes away. But on top of that, these educational institutions, Pelosi State is literally 15 minutes down the road and there's no public transportation that goes there. One thing that I've noticed is the community within Knoxville are young, but they are trapped, because most of them caught up into the drug usage that is happening in Knoxville, which we all know is a crisis, very big. And so therefore, they don't have vehicles to transport themselves to these institutions. But yet, the state is willing to pay for these children and young adults to better themselves. But if they have no way to get to these institutions, they stay stuck. And so therefore, they just end up in the same repetitive cycle, because it's easy. Another thing that I want to bring awareness about is the opportunity to engage in the workforce field. For instance, Maryville has so many jobs available right now, but getting to Maryville is the hard part. If you can't pay for an Uber, which is at least $40, you can't work there unless you live in a city. So if we could open, which, if we could open the aspect of electric trains. I know in the early 1900s, Gay Street had electric trains all over. There's pictures of it. I don't know why it got pulled. It kind of reminds me, actually, where I'm from, which is Salt Lake City, Utah. They had electric trains all over, but they pulled them because they didn't want exponential growth for the city. And so it kept people away, as opposed to San Francisco, which grew tremendously in a fast amount of time. But Mitt Romney, what he was able to bring to the city of Salt Lake, Ogden, and Provo was to interconnect them. They're all about 20 to 30 minutes apart from each other. But because of connecting them through trains, which the railroad system was already there... them through trains, which the railroad system was already there, it was just a matter of putting in the wires and, of course, having the cars to transport these people. It opened everything. After the Olympics were hosted there, within five years, the city doubled in population. So obviously, there was a huge traffic problem. This is when he presented more that we go into the aspect of electric car rail system, and it actually worked very well. So not only did it help with the community on taxes, because he used the federal aspect since it was the federal train system, that we were able to get more into the green money system that they have. I want, I don't know the word verbatim for that, but I know that the Democrats have really pushed this aspect of if you're willing to go green, they'll reimburse you, they'll give you tax breaks. I feel if the city moves more towards this aspect and puts this and implements, at least on, you know, highways like Chapman, Kingston, Martin Luther King, Broadway even, but Chapman north and southbound, and take it maybe even all the way to the airport, it will also bring in tourists that are traveling through to Sevierville. You know, they don't spend all of their time in Sevierville, they actually come up to Knoxville. I've met numerous people that are just passing through. So if you just make it more accessible for the community to use public transportation as opposed to their vehicles, I feel it would be, it would tackle a lot of what you're talking about tonight with the traffic, people having elsewhere to live. You know, if you can open the horizon instead of just Knoxville area, you can open it up to surrounding cities that are 15 minutes away, Johnson City, Marriville, like I said.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The last person signed up to speak is Danielle Butler. Danielle Butler, are you, okay. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Hello, Danielle Butler, 3114 Chantilly Drive. I moved into Knoxville for the first time back in 2008. Then I moved away and I came back because I really liked Knoxville. It was a great vibe, the people were wonderful, the leaders were wonderful. It was really something to hold on to. But the recent change is there's a certain section of us that are not getting represented. You have public housing over here, and you have these apartments that you're building that no one can afford to move into. If you have a job and you're running Knoxville, you shouldn't have to worry about where you're going to live. I can't find an apartment. I have a great job. I'm a private chef. I do my own thing. And when I go to look for an apartment these days, the apartments that they show me for the amount of money, I'm trying to figure out how my bed is going to fit in this tiny little room for $1,200. The people who actually work here, the blood, the sweat, the tears, the people who feed you, the people who bag your groceries, the people who drive your buses, we shouldn't have to worry about where we're going to live. If you're going to raise the rents, raise the pay. I was looking through jobs the other day, and there was one, a job that was offering $10 an hour. There's no way that someone can survive off $10 an hour. We're the people who need to be represented. Someone needs to say, hey, this isn't right. You're building apartments all over the place, and if you have a job, you're not eligible for anything. Some of us don't want to ask for help. Some of us can't ask for help. We just need more representation for the people who actually make Knoxville go and not trying to bring people in here. Work on the people who actually live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes the people signed up to speak at public forum. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.